My mic wasn't on. So now it's 4:01 and we're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Eva Henry, Jan Palowski, Bill Holan, Nancy Sharp, Elise Jones, Deb Gardner, David Beckham, Greg Stokes, Tim Mock, Chrissy Fanginello, Anthony Graves, Robin Kneech, Roger Partridge, Gail Watson, Don Rosier, Libby Zabo, Bob Pfeifer, John Marion.
Here.
Bob Roth.
Here.
Larry Videm, David Spellman, Aaron Brockett.
Here.
Ann Justin, Lynn Baca, Rex Bell, George Teal, Doris Trulard, Laura Christman, Richard Champion, Gail Christie, Rick Teeter, Debbie Nasta, Steve Conklin, Joe Jefferson, Steve Yates, Jeff Deacon, Mark Gruber, Daniel Deck.
President.
Lisa Jones, Laura Brown. Lynette Kelsey, Henry Ergot, Scott Norquist, Storm Glor, Sarah Shakaris Graves.
Here.
Ron Rakowski, T.J. Gordon, Mike Hillman, Brad Weasley, Stephanie Walton, Shakti, Jerry Bean, Phil Sernanik.
President.
Jackie Malley, Win Shaw, Joan Peck, Gabe Santos.
Here.
Here.
Was that Joan Peck?
Yes, it was. Hi.
Ashley Stolzmann.
Here.
Connie Sullivan, Dan Greenberg, Colleen Whitlow, Joyce Palazuski, Deborah Jerome, Sean Forey, Chris Larson, Kyle Mulica.
Here.
John Dyak.
Here.
Sally Daigle, Gary Howard, Rita Dozal. Heidi Williams. Herb Atchison.
Here.
Joyce J., Adam Zarin, Deborah Perkins-Smith, Phil Van Meter.
This is Lynette Kelsey on line two.
Hi, Lynette.
All right, before a public comment, we do have a couple of introductions to make. First of all, the new representative from Thornton is Mayor Heidi Williams. So this is her first meeting here. Thank you for coming.
Welcome.
We have, although it's not his first meeting, the alternate from Broomfield, Greg Stokes is here this evening, so thank you. And then, as I understand it, we have not received a letter, an official letter yet, which we do need to get, but the new representative from Arapahoe County is in the back, Jeff Baker, newly elected commissioner.
To be sworn in on Monday.
To be sworn in on Monday, or sworn at. So, did I miss any guests that are here, or first timers? Seeing nobody? The next item is public comment. We do have an opportunity for the public to make comment. We do ask that there be no public comment for which the board has already received a previous hearing. So is there anybody here that would like to address the board? Seeing nobody, we'll move on. And I realize I forgot one thing, and that is the summary of the November 2 boardwork session. If there's any changes, revisions that need to be made to that, it's under attachment A. Seeing nobody clamoring for change, we'll have those approved as is. So, one of the things I wanted to mention is that we have a much better turnout than I thought we would, given the weather. So congratulations for everybody weathering the storm. I'm sure it has nothing to do with the topic that we're talking about this evening. So I wanted to point out a few things to you real quick. First of all, there are basically three packets that were part of tonight's meeting. The first packet is your normal packet that we get every time, that has the agenda and all that. And the majority of that, of course, this month is made up of the public comment process and the hearings that took place and all that part of the process that staff went through to make sure that we had ample opportunity for the public to get their input. This is really for information only this evening. Hopefully you had an opportunity to review it, see what the public comments were, but this is for information only. There were two links, and the two links that were part of the agenda. The first one was a redline copy of the previous that incorporated all of the, or most of the, public comments that were made. So you had a redline copy that kind of identified what those changes were, and then you had a clean copy that actually had all those changes incorporated into it in a clean set. So what we're going to do is we're going to spend our time on the redline copy so that everybody has an opportunity to go through and see how the public comments were incorporated into this. I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, the majority of the redline copy, probably about 90-95% of the redline copy, has already gone forward to the board through the MVIC process. It's gone to the board, and it's been approved by the board. So I'm encouraging, if, I mean, if people have comments that they want to make, that's fine, but I'm just encouraging everybody to keep in mind that this has already been approved. The majority of this has already been approved by the board. What we're looking at tonight is the incorporation of the public comment process in the overall process of this. The other thing that I want to mention is that we are going to try again, unless somebody feels strongly about wanting to look at individual sentences, individual items, we'll do that, but generally speaking, we're going to go section by section, not item by item or line by line. If somebody wants to go into a little bit more detail, we certainly will do that, but we want to go section by section. So we're going to start with the preamble, and then there are 14 sections, 14 objectives and outcomes. We are going to go 1 through 14 minus number two. The reason we're skipping number two is because it is the one, you might guess, had the most comment. If you had the opportunity to read the backup, you saw that's where the majority of the comment was. So we're going to go 1 through 14 minus two, and then we're going to come back and hit number two. The objective is hopefully to get through the 13 items in a quick as manner as we can, still allowing for plenty of comment by people, and then we'll circle back to number two. Mr. Rex, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say, maybe as Brad is stepping up to the podium now, that we have some extra copies of the redline for those that would wish to have one. So just raise your hand, and we'll get them to you.
So we're going to have a short presentation by Mr. Calvert, and then we will dive into the discussion. Mr. Calvert.
Thank you, and again, yes, thank you all for being here on a snowy afternoon. And I know we have people on the phone. I can even see one. I don't know if Sally can see me. Oh, she can, maybe. I wasn't expecting that. So I am going to do my best to kind of orient you to not only kind of what's in the packet, but also the discussion that will happen this evening, and hopefully by the time I finish doing this, I will not have confused you further. That is my goal, and that's what you should evaluate me on. So, just to kind of give you an idea of what staff has been working on for probably maybe the last, let's call it, six weeks. As the chair mentioned, there was actually a public hearing on the draft Metrovision Plan back in mid-November. You know, the months leading up to this, staff actually floated a calendar that suggested the board might actually consider action in December, but then when 26 sets of comments came in with 300 individual comments, it became clear that that turnaround wasn't going to work, and we need to be really sort of thoughtful about the comments. So we spent a lot of time from that, let's call it mid-November, through the end of the year, really compiling those comments. And I'll talk a little bit about what the chair mentioned in terms of how they're presented to you in your packet. We spent a lot of time in December having coordination meetings with member governments, particularly those that submitted comments. The slide says that we met with seven local governments. I think the number actually ended up being nine. We had a few that happened actually after the packet went out, so we really used those times. If you've ever been a person that has written a comment letter, you try to be concise and to the point, and sometimes it's hard to get context across. And so that's really, from our perspective, what we wanted to get out of those conversations is help us understand more kind of where you were coming from in terms of your comments so that we can obviously put forward suggested revisions that take that context into account. I don't know if your staff has briefed you on those. I found those meetings to be really helpful, really instructive for particularly Doug and I, as we tried to go through and sort of sort through what types of revisions we would recommend to you this evening. And then obviously, we did recommend those revisions. So obviously, you're going to spend probably close to two hours, if not two hours, talking about this evening, and about this this evening, and then ideally, if we get far enough, this may be something that actually goes to the board for action at the regular board meeting on the 18th. So again, a little bit of orientation. I think the chair did a pretty good job of describing the packet as kind of reference material. When we have the conversation, I will bring up the actual document. We will use that as the way that you orient your conversation, but this is hopefully really good reference material for you. The first attachment behind the memo are every set of comments that we received during that public comment period in what I would call its original format. If we got a letter, we just put the letter in front of you. Most of those you actually saw as hard copies back in November, but we just put them in front of you again. Attachment two is a summary of the five sets of public testimony that we received at that public hearing back in November. Each of those folks that provided oral testimony also submitted written comments as well. So you will have coverage two ways from those set of commenters. And then the other thing that we did, as was mentioned in attachment three, we did our best to try to organize the comments kind of by topic, rather than you having to sit down and read 26 individual sets of comments and try to remember what commenter A said about urban centers versus commenter G. We tried to sort of lay those out by topics. I think we ended up with maybe 15 sets of topics that just, we heard consistently through the comment period, so we've tried to organize those comments that way, and that's what's in attachment three, including a very high-level sort of staff response to those comments. As we mentioned in December, you know, it wasn't our goal to give you line by line, comment by comment, staff responses, just high-level staff response to maybe set some context in terms of sort of our feedback on the comments. And then attachment four, which is also noted in the memo, we had a few correspondences after the public comment period that came in from members that we thought it was important to put in front of you this evening as well, so that's really what that includes. I think there's a letter from Westminster, a letter from Douglas County, as well as some comments that came in from Douglas County after the comment period. And as the chair mentioned, the packet, you know, we already were at a pretty voluminous packet, so we linked both the redline and a clean version of those revisions, which again are staff suggestions based on public comment that we received, as well as the feedback we received when we met individually with several communities. So a little bit about kind of what our approach was in terms of how we take, you know, 300-plus sets of comments and decide what to put in front of you in terms of revisions. You know, I can't say that we tried to accommodate every single comment. That wasn't really something that we tried to do, mostly because the feedback that we received from the board in December was very spec, be judicious about the comments, that we would come back to you and suggest merit a revision. There are many people around this table that spent a lot of time around this table coming up with the words that you felt most strongly about, and so we tried to be very aware and cognizant of this was your work, and so we wanted to make sure and be sensitive to that. And so the way that we generally approached this and sort of leaning back on that strategic planning model that you followed as you developed the draft plan, really the strategic initiatives, that was kind of our lowest bar in terms of making potential revision and putting it in front of you. Oftentimes, these came up, let's call, let's talk about those local coordination meetings. These came up in those meetings as things that our members, your staff and your communities are already working on. We might as well reflect it as an initiative. Like, so we heard a lot of that, and we considered that a pretty low bar in terms of suggesting a change. And then the highest bar was to those overarching themes and outcomes. The memo does suggest a few places where outcome language, either the wording itself or the narrative, were revised, and I can walk you through those if that's helpful, but that was kind of our highest bar in terms of staff ultimately suggesting a change, related to kind of spark tonight's conversation. So this is sort of a repeat of what the chair mentioned. Obviously, we welcome discussion on any proposed revision or even something that was in there that just, in a closer second read, maybe caught your eye, that didn't catch your eye before. I'll let the group govern itself in terms of items such as that. And then, as the chair noted, I think, given the level of change that staff is at least bringing forward for this group to start a conversation around on outcome two, it might make sense to sort of hold that to the end, and hopefully you guys can move pretty quickly through everything else, and then we can reserve a fair amount of time for that conversation. And staff, we're welcome to kind of share our perspective on those changes as well when we get to that. I did want to quickly sort of note a little bit about a change to a proposed measure. So without getting into a ton of detail about the changes that were proposed in outcome two, which is related to the region's urban growth boundary area program, you know, really our basic intent as staff in making the changes that we made were to be consistent with the intent of what that program is trying to accomplish, sort of a regional dialogue and conversation about growth that leads to an orderly, compact expansion of our urban footprint, right? That's what we're trying to accomplish through that outcome. The UGB has been a program that's been associated with that, and we actually had a measure that was specifically tied to that UGB program. And one of the things that we did in the wording or language that we put in front of you was to maximize sort of the focus on the intent and minimize sort of the focus on the initiative, because I think that's still a conversation to come at the board level in terms of what the mechanics of that program looks like. So that's a long-winded way of also saying, we actually had a measure tied specifically to UGB, and if we sort of dial back a little bit, specific references to the program and the initiative, it tended to make sense to actually think about the measure as well, because there was a measure related to UGB. And I'll talk a little bit about what we're suggesting. What we're suggesting is something called population weighted density in the region, which is, I know, hard to explain in like three slides, and even in the couple minutes I'll spend here, maybe I won't nail it, but we can spend some time with it if it helps. I think everybody kind of understands what density is, right? Number of people or households in a space. And so what we are suggesting is rather than standard density, we were talking about population weighted density. And I'll talk a little bit about kind of how we ended up here. What's really important, and in some ways, this is an improvement from the previous measure, even sort of absent or the conversation about UGB, we can live with, rather than a custom geography, we can live with a standard geography that doesn't change over time, right? The region's boundary historically does not change over time versus the UGB boundary could change every day. Like, if a new, if a community is committing UGB to a place that had not previously, you have both a numerator and a denominator changing, which from a measurement standpoint, obviously can throw a lot of variables into play. We think that the population weighted density is a really good model for a measure for a couple of reasons. You know, we think of it as, it's a regional figure, but it builds on sort of smaller building blocks, so it builds on what's happening at the census tract level, right? So sort of the world that you live and work in and can relate to, it's a little bit easier to understand. The other thing that we really think that is good about it is that typically this measure associated with increasing density maybe gives the impression that density should be raised everywhere, which is really not what Metrovision has really put out there for many, many years. It really talks about density in the places that want density and maybe less density in the places that are looking to preserve those amenities that are associated with less development. And so the weighted density figure allows us to do that and to sort of emphasize density in places where, again, there are amenities in place, there's infrastructure, and there are communities looking to increase density in those sorts of places. And the other thing that's actually interesting, this last bullet, that I think is maybe, I would call it a nice-to-have, I wouldn't necessarily consider it something that's part of your conversation, but just something that we landed on, is it actually allows for comparisons to other regions to be a little bit easier and a little bit more easy to understand. I don't know, we've got...
I apologize for interrupting, but I would find it very helpful if you'd just explain how you measure this, because I didn't get that from your description.
Sure. So, Andy, do you want to take? You would probably nail it on the first try, rather than me. I will, knowing that it's best to rely on your technical experts, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Taylor, who's a senior planner on our staff, who can, again, probably get it in 30 words right the first time. So I'll let Andy cover that.
So the density is calculated at each census tract, which is kind of like a neighborhood scale, and that's then aggregated, averaged across the region, but it's weighted by population in each of those census tracts. So that's, the average isn't just a straight average, it's actually weighted. So census tracts that have more population carry more weight in that calculation. Does that help answer it? It's, the short description I have is still pretty technical, which is, it's a population-weighted average of the density of each census tract in the region.
And was the alternative the total people divided by the total area?
So the, and the alternative that was previously there, the total area, was this UGBA custom geography.
Okay, I have three other people in the queue, so first Director Shakti.
What is the point of, I'm not saying it's good or bad, I just don't understand. What is weighting it do? What is the point of that, as opposed to just measuring the density?
So it's getting closer to represent the density of the place where the average person actually lives. It's sometimes also called perceived density. So instead of measuring the amount of land around someone, it's measuring closer to the number of people around the average, living around the average person. So it's...
So I'll describe it this way. If you simply look at just standard density calculation, so let's presume the denominator is the regional area and the numerator is number of people in the region, right? Under a standard way of thinking about density, you add one single person to the region, your density has just increased. Under a weighted density calculation, that person that's added in a place that is more populated, that maybe has transit service, has access to amenities, actually moves the needle in a positive direction versus that person that is on the very farthest fringe of the region would actually move the weighted density in the opposite direction. You would actually get a lower amount because you would be adding a person to a lower density area.
Okay, thanks.
It's just, I mean, the Census Bureau is sort of going to this, to get to a place where Andy talked about it, it's that perceived density, right? Rather than just a number, just like, is this place that is actually, I perceive, is dense? Like, so for instance, sort of, it's long been thought of, if you actually run the numbers through a standard density calculation, that Los Angeles is denser than New York, where that's not the perception that you have when you're in those two places, right? When you actually apply a weighted density calculation, New York sort of flies by Los Angeles pretty substantially. And so to give you an idea, when we looked at, the Census looked at, I think, 350 urban areas, and a standard density calculation, the Denver region ranks like in the 120s. Like, our peers in that case are Muncie, Indiana, nothing against Muncie, but like, a place that doesn't necessarily feel like the Denver region. And the weighted side of things, we're more like in the Seattle realm, which really feels more like what we are as a region. And particularly for us, the weighted density calculation makes a lot of sense because we have so much land area that simply can't be developed. Like, it's permanently protected, it's conservation area or open space, like anything that looks at a raw sort of land figure probably isn't the best for our region.
Director Christman.
To compare ourselves with other region peers or other national peers, as you said, Seattle versus Muncie, is this weighting universal, or is this something we came up and then to compare ourselves with Seattle, we have to take their data and input the same kind of weighting? Or is this now becoming the universal weighted calculation?
Yeah, the method that you would use is universal. What changes is obviously the place, and then the census tracts, these sort of individual smaller geographies, those obviously come into play as well. But it's, like I said, the Census was able to do this calculation for all 350 major metro areas in the region and the country, and they apply the same methodology and approach in each case, which again, makes that comparison a little simpler.
Thank you.
Director Holan.
With respect to this new calculus, how will future growth or future potential opportunities in growth be impacted by this new calculus?
How about, I will walk you through the last slide, which is actually sort of an observation, what has happened in the past decade and a half, and that might help sort of answer that. So if it's cool with you, I'll do it that way, and then we'll revisit the question if you didn't really feel like this helped. So one of the things that we did throughout the process when the board was having conversations about potential measures is, like, just take stock of kind of where we are today and really kind of maybe looking back to see where we've been, and then obviously trying to think going forward. Is that target, which in this case, we opted as staff, just to keep the 25% increase target that was associated with the previous measurement and applied it here as well. So I hope this isn't too confusing, but so, anytime you measure a trend, obviously the year that you pick for the first and the last year and all the things that are observed in between changes what that trend line looks like, right? So if you look at our region and apply this sort of standard way of doing this calculation between 2000 and 2009, we actually saw a decrease in weighted population density. I think people can recognize that was probably a period where we were actually growing maybe more on the edges of the region than we may have been growing on the inside of the region. When I say inside, that means existing denser areas. It doesn't just mean the CBD. We have dense census tracts all around the region. Fast forward from 2009 to 2014, when we saw, I mean, almost unprecedented development of higher density development in existing higher-density communities, you saw a 10% overall increase in that weighted density just in really that five-year period. So really, I mean, Andy and I were talking about that a little bit this morning. There's actually a fair amount of variability here, almost based on real estate cycle. When you have a cycle that really is investing in and investing in places that maybe it's more an infill-oriented period of time, you will probably see pretty substantial increases in weighted population density. You go to a different real estate cycle that maybe is about greenfield development, you might see something that either stagnates and doesn't move us towards that increase or, and you know, as we observed between 2000 and 2009, actually a decrease in that weighted density. Whereas between 2000 and 2009, a standard density calculation as a region, we would have simply been, we would have become denser. We were adding more people, land area was staying the same, we were becoming denser, even though the perception of how dense we were as a region was actually changing in maybe a different direction.
Did that help, Director Holan? Okay. Director Sernanik.
Yeah, just in trying to interpret the change in the measure that's here, recognizing the purpose of UGB is to be in some position, at least the principle is to say, hey, we're part of the West, we want to preserve some of our sense of space, and so therefore, some of the objective is to put people where there's already people and therefore increasing the density for where there already are people. Does the measure reflect that part of the UGB intent?
Yeah, and that's a good question. I mean, that was another thing that appealed to staff on this is, in general, like, when I'm asked, like, the 30-second sort of pitch of what this region's sort of growth framework is, it's what you just said, and then it's sort of the corollary of identifying places in the region that actually would accept additional intense development because it makes sense based on their local priorities, right? That you actually want to grow by transit stations. Let's take that as an example. This measure does the best of balancing that, of recognizing that it will point us in a direction and illustrate that we are actually accomplishing both things, that we are putting people where they already are and therefore potentially seeing less development in places that are maybe outside the UGB, to follow your example. Yep.
All right, so before we dive in, a couple of housekeeping items. I heard several people join on the phone, so if you joined in during Mr. Calvert's presentation, if you could identify yourself, please?
Jackie Malley. Win Shaw.
Joe Jefferson also here, online.
Scott Norquist.
Who was that?
Scott Norquist.
Scott Norquist.
Is that everybody?
And also note Anthony Graves.
Anthony Graves showed up, yep, and I didn't see...
Jeff Deacon.
Jeff Keiken.
You know what? I didn't phrase that very well, Mr. Graves, I apologize. It's about time, no. Um, okay.
Bob? And Sally?
Sally Daigle, okay.
Yes. And what about Bob, who's been showing us snow? I appreciate that.
All right, so a couple of other things I wanted to mention real quick. Um, typically, as you know, we have a 6 o'clock hard stop to this meeting because we have a committee meeting afterwards. Uh, I'm hoping that we can get through this, as Mr. Calvert mentioned, would like to bring this to the board at the next board meeting. That's probably aspirational, but we'll see. Um, but what a, if, if we're, if we are getting close, and it looks like we're gonna run over but still make it to the finish line tonight, we're not gonna have a hard stop at 6, just so you know. I'll kind of judge where we're at. The other thing is, I did want to, uh, and I should have done this before, I did want to comment on the staff efforts, Dr. Cog's staff efforts on this, because as you can imagine, when you read through the, all the comments, um, obviously there were a lot of conflicting comments, so they needed to go through and kind of filter through what made sense, uh, what, maybe some things we've already talked about and discussed, and kind of get those conflicts, uh, in addition to the 10 meetings that they had with different municipalities. So I wanted to comment on, on Dr. Cog's staff efforts on that. So we're gonna dive in, so the first area that we're gonna talk about is, from the first page that starts out about, about Dr. Cog, through outcome number one, which is about 14 pages back after that. So going section by section, like we mentioned, this preamble of the first, everything before outcome one, is there anything that anybody would like to talk about? Director Knich.
Thanks. We don't need to talk about it now, but I just want to flag that there are summaries in this section of later sections. And so to the extent we have any discussion about those, I just want to make sure that we all have the same understanding, that the summary would of course be then connected or impacted when we get to the topic. Is that, so we don't need to mess with the summaries?
That makes sense.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody, we will go to outcome one on page 12.
And I'll just, I have the red line version up, if someone thinks I should be using the clean copy, tell me, otherwise I'm gonna roll with this.
Not seeing anybody, and I, I, I think the red line version is the one that we should be looking at so we can understand the, the changes. So I'm not seeing anybody, uh, jumping up and down for outcome one. As mentioned, we're gonna skip outcome two for right now, and go to outcome three, connected urban centers and multimodal corridors. Comments, suggestions, conversation?
And I would just add, if anyone has questions about kind of where staff came from in terms of making this revision, or revisions, including kind of conversations that we had, uh, with your staff, I'm happy to fill in that context if you think it's helpful.
Director Shakti. Anybody on three? Seeing nobody, we will move on to outcome four, starting on page 28. Director Shakti.
So page 30, um, we've crossed off, develop supporting infrastructure and local regulations, policies, and ordinances regarding alternative fuels, fleet conversions, environmental preservation, and related topics. Um, this is voluntary options available for local organizations.
Uh, that was just, that appeared twice, that appeared once in this section, and once in kind of, let's call it the environmental section, and we had a few commoners suggest it probably made more sense to, to be there if it was only gonna be one place, and so that's, um, and someone, we will, I will double check that as I'm scrolling through, but that's why that change was made. It was just a deletion here, but it remains, um, at a different location.
Just a quick request from the board, or from the chair is, is, on pages where there's lots of changes, if you could kind of identify where you, where you're at, so I can keep up. Director Williams.
So I'm new, and I'm looking at my staff notes, so I apologize when I don't have a clue what I'm saying. Um, on, uh, the red line under collaboration, it says coordinate with RTD to improve local service, including service biops for increased frequency and coverage. We don't like, uh, the word service biops, and so if that, those words were removed, then we would, um, support that language.
I'm sorry, what page were you on?
29.
29, thank you.
It's on the right, under collaboration, kind of third bullet point down.
So I apologize, can you repeat? So the service biops is the part that...
The service biops are the, the concerning words for us, um, because if it appears in this document, it'll also be in the, um, Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan. And it says, RTD could use this to only expand service in Thornton if we are willing to pay for it. So we, I mean, we, we don't like the words buy up, and so we would support it if those words were removed.
Director Jones.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess I'll speak instead.
Director Brockin.
Thank you. Um, while, while we certainly prefer for RTD to fund the service themselves, uh, service biops are an important tool that we use in the city of Boulder and also Boulder County to improve service where RTD is unwilling to. So I think it's, it's important to keep this in our, our toolkit so that we do have that option.
And I, I guess for me, like, the staff is saying, and I agree with this, over half the population of Thornton is not served by RTD, so that, that isn't a great term for us, because we're very different, obviously, than a Boulder would be, so that's why we don't get the words.
Director Jones.
Uh, you know, point well taken, I think we all, uh, probably share a universal desire for more funding for transit opportunities, including those that lie outside RTD. But because this is optional, and because it, it's, it highlighted as one tool out of many, it's not saying it has to be one, um, I guess I would, and because some jurisdictions do use it, and it's good to remind RTD that we are allowed to do this, I, I would weigh in on keeping it in, um, although, I, I'm happy to support enhanced language about seeking additional funding and opportunities for transit outside of RTD, if there are other places to insert that.
Other comments on that? Director Sernanek.
Just one, uh, particularly when we're dealing with the senior population, there are places where other funding is used for transportation options that don't include RTD or are in conjunction with RTD. I, um, Director Williams' comment, um, would say, uh, other language would be appropriate here other than biops, because it's not necessarily the community, sometimes it's, uh, um, outside of, uh, any kind of municipality, uh, so you, we might want to look at, um, alternative approaches of some sort, uh, or, uh, additional funding sources, uh, that can be done for transit.
Director Knich.
I was, um, I don't know if this mic is working, is it working? Okay. Um, I, potentially a way to emphasize the RTD funding, and maybe we could change the wording, but can, can coordinate with public transit providers to improve regionally funded transit service, or locally, regionally funded local service, comma, maintaining the right to buy out for increased frequency and coverage, as to, or, or, you know, so that they're clearly two different things, so I think that's maybe a way to emphasize that this is about you, you know, the region funding some, but don't take away anyone's right to buy more. That work?
That could work, yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like we have, uh, for Director Williams' concern, we have a, an option that works? Is everybody good with that option? Very good?
Can, can I also just clarify, when something like that, I don't need to capture tonight, we have a recording, I've got the word, y'all are, is y'all heading out with each other, we're good? Okay. Cool.
Thanks.
Very good. Other items on, uh, regional objective four? Director Christman.
Uh, not to be a pain in the butt, but...
Mike.
Oh, sorry. Page 30. Um, hierarchy, hierarchical. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're the second person to catch that, so thank you for that, that was already on our list.
Oh, okay.
Don't make me say that word, it's very difficult to say.
Okay, just one more question, is hierarchical within the context of, uh, a biking network a term of art? Because I'm not sure what hierarchical network is.
Director, basically it means, this is Jacob Rieger for Transportation Staff, basically it means, um, within the context of a bicycle network, trying to have some differentiation of, you know, a major regional trail like the High Line or the South Platte, you know, versus, um, a sharrow on a street. You know, so it is, you know, sort of level of, of facility provided, you know, volume, regional importance, whatever metric you want to look at, but it is trying to make those distinctions on the bicycle network, and that's a big part of what our upcoming active transportation plan will do.
No, it is, it is a term of art, within the community, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would...
Go ahead.
I would, I would suggest that is similar to, like, you know, the, the classification changes, differences in our roadway network, interstates versus local roads and everything in between, kind of that kind of concept.
Yeah, they're not computational, it is qualitative, but...
All right. Seeing nothing else on four, we're gonna move on to outcome five, which starts on page 32. Not seeing anybody raising their hand, I'm assuming that this is good to go, and we will move on to outcome six, starting on page 38. Comments or questions? Director Williams.
I have one, but I'm not quite ready to talk about it yet, I need to still understand what they're trying to tell me here, so...
Okay.
Can we maybe come back to it?
Sure. Was there somebody on the phone that had something? Okay, we're gonna come back to six in just a moment, and we're gonna look at outcome seven, which starts on page 41. Outcome seven, comments or questions? Seeing nobody?
That's it.
Outcome eight, starting on page 45. Comments or questions? Again, seeing nobody? Moving on to outcome number nine, starting on page 48. Comments or questions on outcome nine? Seeing nobody, we'll revisit outcome six, and Director Williams has indicated that they are good with it, so we will, uh, have no further comment on six unless there's somebody that has something to add. On to outcome 10, starting on page 54. Seeing nobody? We will move on to outcome 11, starting on page 58. Seeing nobody, we will move on to outcome 12. Outcome 12 starts on page 61. Seeing no raised hands, we will move on to outcome 13, starting on page 68. No raised hands on that, so we'll go to outcome 14, starting on page 71. No comments or questions on 14? After 14, there are a few appendices, anything on those that anybody wants to discuss? All right. As most of you know, I periodically do time checks, so we're at 4:46, we hope to get through 13 out of 14 in one hour, we beat it, so congratulations. Uh, Director Sernanek.
And, Brad, I just want to, um, bring up one item is, uh, and I'm going back to page five, so, uh, apologies to the facilitator on this, but I wanted to make sure we went through the other sections.
One demerit.
I'm glad it's only one. In this, we also had subcommittees of the board, uh, that went through and involved, uh, some additional stakeholders, uh, particularly when it came to areas of economic development and housing. And those are not included here, but we're very dependent upon those for execution of the plan. Um, and I'm wondering, it didn't seem as I went through this, uh, and our staff went through it, that that part was included to recognize, um, the, the chambers, uh, the economic development, uh, organizations across the region, and the housing organizations as well. And those are, those are pretty important stakeholders and partners in this, and I know I've mentioned earlier about making sure that they're on board, because the plan is only good as good as the whole team is. Uh, and maybe you can comment on that, and whether we should include that, uh, in this stakeholder section.
Mr. Calvert.
Sure, I, I, I'm, on the, the latter, the latter point, I, I'm certainly willing, and frankly, I think it's probably a good ad, um, to talk about that specific outreach. I know for the folks that were involved, um, for those that don't, that weren't here now, three years ago, or however long it wa, long ago it was, um, the last few outcomes that you just talked about, um, included some, some, the issues of housing and also the issues of economic vitality, uh, which, which in reality had not been, uh, I would, I would say kind of omnipresent, had not been sort of front and center and Metrovision in the past, uh, but through the very early stakeholder engagement efforts, it was suggested that those issues are really important. Um, I was, I mean, I can't tell you how many meetings I have in them, and over a course of a week where the issue of housing comes up, right? I mean, it's, if you've lived in this region and experienced either from a personal level or trying to keep workforce or, or whatever, like, you can't, uh, escape it. Uh, but because those issues weren't necessarily, again, front and center in the previous version of the plan, uh, you know, we wanted to vet the idea of this plan more broadly, talking about those issues, uh, with the board. Um, and so I want to say that was now 2014, um, there were two ad hoc committees that were formed, um, one to look at the housing issue, and one to look at the economic vitality issue, and particularly on the economic vitality side, um, that group leaned on sort of our core set of economic development partners to just make sure, as, 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 as the, the board was thinking through kind of that, that aspirational vision, um, of the region, which is about sort of growing the economy and growing prosperity and making sure people have access to that opportunity, that actually, that, that's in line with something that they would support, and I think you got feedback at the time, um, that it was. Um, you know, I know, uh, Director Sernanek mentioned, um, maybe this was the December board meeting, that we should probably reengage, uh, those folks, um, and I agree with that, but I also will tell you, I probably fell short, um, on that. Uh, December was scramble mode to get in front of, um, our member governments, um, but oftentimes, when we met with staff, we at least oftentimes had kind of the, the economic development person from that jurisdiction in the room, which obviously isn't necessarily the same as the full set, um, of economic development partners, um, but we did have a few folks on the, on the housing side, um, submit comments largely in support, um, of where, where the draft ended up, um, but, but frankly, that, that reengagement will likely happen after the plan is considered, uh, by the board, um, unless you, you know, obviously you, you have the authority to tell me, we're not doing anything until, um, we've, we've circled back, uh, with those groups, but, but in reality, I spent more time focusing on the comments that came in the door and reconciling those, and then again, having, uh, conversations with our members than we really did with, um, other partners and stakeholders.
And recognizing that, uh, the reengagement process is gonna be ongoing, um, I'll try and futz for you on that one, um, but wouldn't it be good... and futz for you on that one. But wouldn't it be good to mention those stakeholders and that, that aspect of our subcommittee process, that unlike prior Metrovision plans, this did take those things into, into context, because they realized they are important for the execution of the plan?
Mr. Rex.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I mean, back to, to the whole idea of recognizing those, the valuable work those two, two ad hoc committees did, there's probably two opportunities within that call-out box to do that, is either under the advisory committee, although we don't mention the housing and economic vitality until the last, the last paragraph of, and within Sustainable Communities Initiative. Maybe right there, we just recognize the work that those two ad hoc committees did.
Yeah, but it's more than the SCI activity-
Right.
-that we went to. So burying it there does not do it justice.
Right.
In my opinion.
Yeah, there's, there's that opportunity, and there's also an opportunity, what is, on what is the bottom of page four, that talks about what's different about today's Metrovision, where we highlight a little bit about sort of the introduction of maybe, let's call them new topics, for lack of a better term. We could probably wait and emphasize that the introduction of two new topics also involved significant conversations with key partners that are maybe closer to that world than we have traditionally spent time, and that, that was a key piece to making sure that we were finding the right fit from this sort of aspirational vision piece.
Does that help?
As, as long as something's included.
Thank you.
Now, I think that's important. Also recognize, you know, the work in collaboration with the board and those, those interest groups, I think it's worth mentioning for sure. Because after all, it was an extra meeting for you all, monthly.
All right. We're going to go to outcome number two. Certainly expect that we're going to have good discussion on this. What I would ask, I mentioned this before, but what I would ask is since there are a lot of changes, and there's probably going to be a lot of conversation, if you could help me by identifying where you are in your, in the narrative, so I can follow with you, that'd be great. And we're going to start with Director Stolzmann.
Thank you. I'll just make a general comment. I feel like the changes dance around our process for urban growth boundary, and I think they actually make it more confusing. So a lot of times, you talk about a process, or there is a process, or there will be a process, and it just seems like if we would just name it, and then, we can always change the process. That's the path we're, we're going down to discuss what the process will be and what we want the process to look like. But I find it, that the revision seems more confusing to me than it was originally.
Director Kneech.
Thanks. I want to just start with a little context, and then I'm going to start with outcome two at the top of fifteen, the, the big text. I know we have a bunch of folks who've kind of newly joined the board, and so one of the things we did probably two years ago now is a exercise called scenario planning, where the staff put various types of growth patterns into a computer system and then said, "How long do people spend in traffic? How much congestion is there? How many, how, how much does infrastructure cost?" And, and we learned a lot about the value of compact growth as a region, right? This is not that every block has to have the same density, but just regionally, if you have more compact growth versus less. And I think that that is a really, for me, has been a powerful piece of data, as we thought about these different sections of the agreement, you know, or of the, of the plan. And so for me, that's what this section was about, is about the idea that having some focus is good for the region because of resources and because of the quality of life of our residents, right? So compact growth results in many hours fewer average of congestion compared to the alternative. So, and it doesn't designate, you know, the specific type of development any one community needs. It just talks about the overall goal and values. So, so I, and I know from, from the conversations we've had at this table, why the UGB and UGA as a specific tool for that has become difficult. And, and so I, I think that these were tough negotiations over these language sections the first time around. I think many folks felt really strongly that we had to stand by the UGB and the UGA, and clearly, you know, we still have a number of communities and commenters who, who wanted us not to be referring to that. So I personally, for the, you know, in consulting with Denver and talking about the values that, you know, our community has, I, I think it's okay to take out a reference to UGB and UGA. I think that it is a program. It's not a value. It's not a big-picture principle. And so I think that's a big step, because I think it's still important for us to have something like the UGBA and A, and I know we're going to make some changes to it. So it makes me nervous and uncomfortable to take out a reference to it. I'm just going to be really honest, because it makes me nervous that we'll go through that process and maybe not have it anymore, even with fixing a lot of the things we want to fix, right? Annexation questions and things like that. I think those things are fixable. So I'd rather keep the language in, but I am willing to take it out. What I would like to propose, though, is I think some of the language that replaced it kind of missed the, the point of the value. So I, I want to just propose a few words to add, and there's a couple places these get added, just to be consistent. So I'm going to start with this one, and we can debate it there, but just know that there's like three or four places it would have to go just to be consistent. But right now, the sentence reads, "Through a coordinated effort between Dr. Cog and local communities, new urban development occurs in an orderly and compact pattern." My proposal is to add the words "within regionally designated growth areas." So this implies that there's agreement. Only if Dr. Cog and local communities agree, because that's at the beginning of the sentence, could you have a designated area. If there is no agreement, there would be no designated area. But if there is agreement between Dr. Cog and local communities on designated areas, that's where we should be focusing. Doesn't say what those are called, doesn't say how much of them there are, doesn't talk about policy. It just says, hey, where these two parties agree, that's where we should focus. So, so the words I'm talking about adding, and maybe it is helpful if you put them up there, "within regionally designated growth areas." So that's the concept. And, and like I mentioned, I can, I can outline, I think, the pages where you'd want to make it consistent. There's, I think, four other places where this same language kind of appears, but we can talk about it from this point. And then there's one other language change I want to talk about separate, but this is the, this is the main one.
So before I recognize other people, I would welcome comments on that particular proposed change. Director Sernanek.
It's in the spirit of high-level first in this, but one is trending away from using the urban growth boundary, UGB slash A terminology, to make it less of a lightning rod. I absolutely agree with that. What I don't see in this is why. And starting with the why, we've yet to put together what specifics we might have on a program going forward, and how that would work. But, you know, you go back to wherever it was, nineteen eighty-seven or so, when it, when it came about, it was basically, what we wanted to do is not sprawl our way in accommodating additional people, because we wanted to protect some of our sense of being Western and to preserve some of that. I miss that. And when I read through the red-line version, and when I read through the not-red-line version, it's lost entirely to say why we're doing it, other than it's a growth tool, which is an important piece. But why the hell are we doing this? Because we think it's important, and as Director Kneech has, has, has mentioned, it's, it's for a quality of life for the region that we want to have this. And those, those are important concepts to have. So as we go through discussing the specifics of any program, we ought to know why we're taking this on, and I would like to see that language or language to that effect. I don't have specific words to suggest. I will leave that to folks that are more eloquent than I am.
So, real quick, we have, I have three in the queue, Director Shakti, Holan, and Jones. And I will first ask, and Chrisman, I will first ask, again, I want to keep on this topic before we go to a new topic. So I'll just ask, is Director Shakti, is it on the same topic, or is it a new topic? Okay. Director Holan.
My comment is basically, in, in this general issue, we submitted a letter to, to the executives at Dr. Cog, and it was not acknowledged in the section, as I can see. So I'd like to make sure that that gets included in the, in the final draft.
It was in the backup. Director Jones, same topic?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Director Kneech, for bringing this up. I would put a finer point even on the why and the regional, the scenario planning that, that underlies the whole idea behind a compact regional footprint, which is what we're talking about. Every single metric that we measured, not just quality of life, if you parse it out, air quality, water quantity, traffic, funding for infrastructure, every single metric that we measured is better if the region has a compact growth pattern, and that we don't, for lack of a better term, sprawl without an orderly, thoughtful process. This is one of, I think, the heart and soul concepts of Metrovision, and it has been from the very get-go. And I would say it's something that my neck of the woods thinks is one of the most important pieces. So, and when we discussed this earlier, I don't know, was it eighteen months ago, each word was, was discussed and negotiated very carefully. And I think most folks around this table agreed with the spirit. Of course, we don't want to sprawl. Of course, we want the benefits of a compact form. And we noodled around on the details, but I think the spirit, everybody agreed with. So I will just preface my comments to say, it is hard, then, to go back and revisit something so important, and it's not something to be done lightly. I appreciate the spirit of trying to get this across the finish line, and some jurisdictions have issues with the details of how the UGBA program is currently being implemented. We're going to work on those, but, so I'm willing to consider moving away from specifically talking about UGBA in this and talk about the intent. I do feel we've, the edits have gone too far and have lost some of that. And one of the areas where I think it's gone too far is not talking about a regional designation. So I find myself in, in great support of where Director Kneech is going, to make sure that that gets put back in, so we don't lose sight of all of the great regional benefits we're trying to capture through this important outcome.
Thank you. Director Chrisman.
This goes to this language, and essentially what Elise is saying, if, since I don't know where all the other changes are, right now, I think the language you've added, in fact, conflicts with that first paragraph, because it's, it in essence says there is going to be regionally designated growth areas. And then the next sentence just talks about a process to help the region manage. So that isn't the same as a regionally designated growth area. So if you are going to have that in there, then you need to do exactly what Elise is saying, is create the process in here to create growth areas that are regionally designated, where, and it appears, is the only place that development will occur, as this is written. I don't know that that's the intent, but by putting that in, that's what you've said.
Director Kneech.
Yeah, I guess my response would be that this is more like the Constitution. It doesn't implement anything on its own. It needs a statute. It needs an ordinance to do that. And so you could look at any page in this document, and there are values and aspirational goals that require something else to make them effective. And, and in some ways, you know, when I was debating this section, you know, one of the staff members said to me, "Well, you know, this was an odd duck. We didn't have the names of programs in other sections. We had the values and the goals." So this one was a little odd, and that helped a little bit to get me there in, in terms of thinking about this differently. So, so I would just say that the whole document makes reference to things that are not policy, and in part, that's in, well, it's not in part. It is intentional. It is intentional that this does not lay out the how or the why. It creates a menu of options that we go forward with and debate as we get to each one. So I think, you know, in, in that regards, I would say, step back and think about the whole document for a minute. I, I don't think we have to have the details of that, because we don't do that in most other areas. We don't talk about how we're going to advocate for RTD to pay for more local service. We don't talk about how we're going to expand lane miles in, in areas that need additional roadways, right? We talk about those as tools that have to occur. So I, I think we should treat this the same way.
Then why do you need that line?
Director Chrisman. Director Chrisman.
Then why do you need that language? Because it's taking your theory.
Yeah.
What does that language give you that leaving it alone wouldn't? Because I find it, I find it confusing. But maybe I'm the only one, so.
I'm going to go to Director Shakti, then Director Brockett.
Is this my full turn, or just my responding to the?
Your, your response to start, and then I'll forget you. No.
Just that, how does it change it in terms of, this is the Constitution level, and it's saying that, putting this language in is saying that we have broad vision and goals that include working together as a region to define how we're going to grow. And that our, it's not that our only regional goal is that each jurisdiction does whatever they want, which I, I think that the language was changed to such an extent in this draft that it currently says, "Each jurisdiction will do whatever they want," which I don't even know why you need a chapter then. And I think we've really lost something in that I agree, I feel fine about taking out the specific references to the UGB, but I think that the fact that we have come together as a region with a consensus process about this really important issue is something we can be really proud of, and we need to work on it and fix it, but we can't just be done with it that quick. That, we're not comfortable with that in Lakewood, so.
Just a side comment. I find it interesting, this healthy discussion amongst three attorneys. Director Brockett.
Well, actually, Director Shakti expressed a lot of what I was going to say, because I think that the language has, has backed out to the point where the intent of, of the urban growth, original intent of the urban growth boundary in area has been lost. I mean, it seems to me that, that putting a label on it makes it simpler, which was Director Stolzmann's point that led off the discussion. It gives you an easy way to refer to something. And you could certainly take the original language and change it somewhat to make references to the fact that this is a program in flux, that it, there, it's under revision. We're going to define it in collaboration with local jurisdictions to meet the needs of those jurisdictions. But if you had a, a label, which is a label we've been using for, I don't know how many years, it does provide some convenience. I mean, I'm certainly willing to take the label away, as some other people have described, as long as we strengthen the language to get the intent back in. But it seems to me that the label of the UGBA is the simplest way to deal with this question.
So real quick, take a quick pause. The people in the room have a distinct advantage, because I can see your hands. So right now, in the queue, I have Director Stolzmann and Director Shakti. Is there anybody on the, on the line that would like to get in the queue? Going once.
Bob, you know, I can't, Jackie, I can't give up my opportunity ever to speak, right?
All right, so, so I'll, so I'll call your name in, in the queue. I just wanted to make sure that-
Okay.
-people that were on the phone had an opportunity. So anybody else on the phone that would like to jump in? So right now, in order, I have Stolzmann, Shakti, and Malay. Director Stolzmann.
Thank you. I just wanted to point one thing out. In, in other areas, we do refer to programs. So like in outcome three, we talk about urban centers. We didn't have to talk about urban centers. We could have talked about areas that are planned for housing and business growth, but we just call it an urban center. And then we use that word over and over again, and it's in the definition section. So I, I do think in all of the sections, we use these terms that are things that we use as tools, and I don't think that's inconsistent. And I'm glad that Director Malay is going to talk. I was going to ask her if she'd want to chime in. Through the time that I've been on the board, there was a lot of discussion to get to this point, and I thought Director Malay had a lot to contribute to get us to where we are, so, thanks.
Director Shakti.
I took extra time in my last turn. Thank you.
Director Malay.
And so I guess what my community and therefore I am struggling with is the unknowns associated with the urban growth boundary. I think Lone Tree is an excellent example of a community that is really looking at more dense development, much to the chagrin of some of the residential neighborhoods within my community, but we understand as a city that that really is our future. And we have planned for it to be that way and we certainly don't need Dr. Cog's UGB/A to tell us that or reinforce that. But when we put a label on something and then draw a boundary around it, um, we have created a problem for ourselves. And there is a development that is proposed in my community that is currently not in the UGB/A. And I feel like if we say yes, we, I can, I am very supportive of the proposed changes by staff, understanding and recognizing, there may be some wordsmithing associated with it. But I don't want to sign on to a, a document that's going to put me in a parochial fight with Douglas County because I'm taking away their UGB/A for a development that actually really makes sense for my community and is part of my long-term plans. So to me, while my regional hat at Dr. Cog is very, very important to me and I do believe and my community is following the practices of the concepts of UGB/A, this development is cer, is now not, is outside my UGB/A. So if we don't see some changes, I'm in a position where I cannot support this document. So I am willing to, to try and, and frankly, during our, I was not made aware of the fact that this development was not within our UGBA area until my staff reviewed this draft. So, and I can't imagine that other communities aren't in the same place. So when we've got a fixed area or a fixed boundary that's going to just create a fight with, from Lone Tree with another municipality or county, I'm not willing to sign on to do that.
So Director Malay, if I could ask one clarifying question.
Yeah.
It, I, it sounded like you were at first speaking against, against the individual change, but then I heard you say that your community probably couldn't support this document at all. Did I hear that correctly?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I'm supportive of the language that staff proposed.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
And I recognize that we may need to wordsmith that a little bit, but the, the, but Lone Tree cannot sign on to a UGB/A that we're already in conflict with. I mean, it just does not make sense for my community.
Director Knich.
So, um, at, at the risk of potentially stepping on the chair's toes, I guess what I'm curious of is I, I hear some folks who think that the simplest and easiest way to do it is to keep the UGBA in here and, and I hear some folks saying that, you know, they, they can't live with it at all. I, I, I feel like my language is intended to, to be a compromise and so I guess I want to just maybe ask the pointed question, could both sides live with the revision I've proposed? And I can list off the places it would go. It would go on page six, which is a summary of this same outcome. It would go on page 10, which is a summary of the same outcome. It would get tacked on to page 18, objective two. Um, uh, so there's a revision from the staff on objective two and it would get tagged on the end of that. And then it would get tacked on page 19. Um, in the, uh, that one's a little trickier because it's a two-sided page, but it would go on the left-hand side on the last bullet there. And so, um, so it's the, I, I would just suggest the same clause just carries through for consistency within regionally designated growth areas. So, so I guess, you know, Mr. Chair, if, if I may just, if folks could maybe, can, can, could this be a compromise? Or is there a slight word change to this that's, that would be necessary to get there? But, but I, I mean, I, I think that making everyone feel thrilled in this section may not be an outcome that we can achieve.
So, so.
Oh yeah, starting with page 15. These were the other references. Sorry.
Yeah. So everybody's aware of this, I'm sure, but I'll just remind the board that we do not actually take votes at this, at this table. So it would go to the full board for a vote. But I agree with Director Knich's question as to if we could get some sort of indication whether or not people are generally comfortable with those changes or not. So I don't know, uh, you know, we do a thumbs up of some sort of people. So what, what we have is that the verbiage changes that Director Knich has recommended and quite a bit of conversation around that. So is, is that language sufficient or are there things that maybe somebody would want to tweak a little bit more? Director Jones.
Um, I would put a thumbs up. There is one other change that, um, I would suggest that I think is more clarifying. So I think this is the, sort of the crux of the changes, but I just wanted to put a placeholder.
I'm generally seeing people in agreement. Director Brockett.
Well, I, I think the, the language here is good. I, I would just, I would be interested in seeing some strengthened language throughout the sections and I apologize, I don't have a specific language handy at the moment, but something about how Dr. Cog will be, will be working with the communities to designate areas for future growth. So I, I feel like the language that's, that's in here, even, even with this addition from Director Knich, that doesn't go quite far enough to state that, that we will be, this is something that we're going to continue to develop as an organization to work on some future way of, of designating urban growth areas, even if we don't call it that.
So a clarifying question for my benefit, the portion that says coordinated effort between Dr. Cog and local communities, you would want something possibly stronger than that?
Well, and not necessarily in the, I guess I'm, not necessarily in that outcome language, but within the text. I guess what, I'm looking for some, some additional kind of clarifying language within the text that would state our intent to track this as an organization in collaboration, you know, with the, the local jurisdictions.
Mr. Rex.
Well, I was wondering if it'd be possible, maybe in that, in the call-out box that specifically talks about the UGBA program, um, in the second paragraph there, where we have the red line, we, we mentioned that it hasn't been evaluated for several years. Have we mentioned something there about we will be working with local communities, dot, 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 to, to further advance?
I think that could get it, get to it.
Something there.
I'll just add, there's also a regional initiative spelled out that kind of gets to the same point, but that may be one of the ones that would be impacted by Director Knich's comments to make, to bring these four words into that.
So although there might be a little more conversation on this particular item at the board level, it looks like we have generally, people are good with this and we're going to move it forward. So setting that one aside, what else do we have to discuss on this? Director Jones.
So in the spirit of, I think Director Sernanek started it, talking about making sure that we're talking about, you know, what we're doing here, I would suggest on page 18, up in the narrative paragraph below, regional objective two, in that second sentence where it talks about, um, achieve, right after the word achieve, so identify local urban growth priorities and aspirations, da, 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 and, and the region's ability to achieve. Shared outcomes is a pretty vague sort of ambiguous thing. So I would propose inserting the words after achieve, a compact regional footprint and other shared objectives, or, uh, shared outcomes. Because I think it's really important, why we're doing this is the compact regional footprint. That's what's deriving the, the public benefits. And I think it's important to call that out. Otherwise, shared outcomes could be anything.
So did that capture it accurately, Director Jones?
Yep.
Comments, questions on that particular item? Looks like we have general agreement on that as well. Director Sernanek.
And I'm, I'm not opposed to what Director Jones has put out there, but I would put something up in the first paragraph of this section to say what we're trying to do is avoid the negative aspects of sprawl that I think we have commonality on, at least that's where I come from. And I would put that up way at the beginning of this section.
Which section?
In the first paragraph there on outcome two. Why, why are we even talking about this?
Mr. Rex.
Way back there.
Or, or, or even earlier on page 10.
So it's more of a historical perspective as to the reason why we're even.
Right.
Gotcha.
Everybody understand and good with that? Comments, questions? Don't sell beyond the close. I am not seeing anybody else that wants to amend, change or question. I'll give you another opportunity to make sure I haven't missed anybody. Director Jones.
Um, if I could put jurisdictions on the spot who have provided comments that have caused us to so extensively edit this, have we got your support from Metro Vision for making these changes? Because I want to reemphasize again, these edits are hard for my jurisdictions to swallow, even with the fine tuning we just did. In the spirit of compromise and collaboration and passing a regional vision, I'm willing to go there, but it's with the assumption that this addresses the concerns of jurisdictions that commented. And so before I say, yep, I'm willing to sign off, I guess I need to hear that we've actually made progress on that front. So if the jurisdictions that commented could maybe give some feedback, that would be helpful.
Director Holan.
We're, we're fine with the editorial changes and the, the entire concept presented in the Metro Vision document.
Director Williams.
Okay.
Director Partridge.
I'll first say, we were probably one of the first ones to send a letter and I would first explain that because as you operate on a board, a commission, we believe in Douglas County, you move as a whole. So with that, that's why in the end of, in November, it was brought to the full Douglas County Board and a decision was no, of not support because the decision, the, at that point was December 6th was going to be a, a vote. With that, there's a new draft document. So with that, I have committed to say in true form, yes, I will take this back to our board. But I will make a comment regarding our comments. We did send our letter. We stated information as to why we were not contacted by staff until after the fact where comment period was closed. That I disagree with. So our comments were not put into red line version. So I would urge everybody to go through Douglas County's comments again, especially regarding page two, because what this document does, it does refer UGBA. It does refer to TIP. So our concern is, all the way along, the verbiage in here is very urban-centric, which does not fit for Douglas County. I think even Mayor Malay even made that reference to that. So I think counties are at grossed advantage when it comes to UGBA and I will be interested in talking to the full Arapaho County Board regarding this too. And the other thing, the other issue is, as this is a guiding document, a visionary document, we always have asked that question, why are there true action words involved? Because as you can see, this is not a policy document for any jurisdiction to take. That I agree with. This is not the master plan for Douglas County and I don't know of anybody that uses this as their comprehensive master plan. But with that, we know historically, this has been used for TIP criteria. TIP criteria has not been set. So why would you have action words, regulatory words, policy words in a document for a criteria on funding? That's been our comments all the way along. We disagree with that. So I can't tell you how the board's going to vote, but as I can tell you, there have been no changes that Douglas County has recommended.
Director Holan.
I would only add that the, the, the board is in general agreement with these changes. However, we, we have a new board coming on, on the ninth of January.
Oh my God.
And I can't speak for, they have, we've not voted, we can't, I can't speak for the outcome, but I think in general, we're agree with it. And to your comments, Roger, I think, I think we still, we share those concerns about the TIP, uh, uh, criteria, selection criteria. So I will, um, pull back a little bit of my comment, but I think in general, we're agree, we're in agreement with the, with most of the issues here, with the exception of what, what you brought up. Thank you.
Okay. We beat our time by 34 minutes, which is kind of amazing to me. Staff, anything?
I would assume that this will be something that will go to the board for consideration at your January board meeting.
Yes, thank you for that, uh, comment. We, this will move forward to the January 15th.
Obviously with the changes that were discussed.
With the changes, yes. So, um, Director Holan has asked for a word, but I'm going to go because I, I think he wanted something at the end. So I'll go to Director Jones and then Director Graves.
I just wanted to put a fine point on the upcoming board meeting and where we'll vote on this. We have to have a majority of all members, not a majority of those present. This is one of the most important things that Dr. Cog does. And so I just want to encourage everybody to please be in attendance. If for something, for some reason you can't send your alternate, it's important. This is our regional vision and it would be great to have a, a really big vote on that. So just wanted to underscore the fact that we need people to show up.
So I would only add to that, that if you are not able to make it and you are sending your alternate, there's a lot of material here, please make sure that your alternate is up to speed as much as is possible to come to the board meeting prepared. Director Graves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of notes of thanks to the staff who's really bent over backwards to accommodate the board. We've had some really rich discussion here and I feel that we're really settling into a great area, but staff has done a wonderful job trying to be a filter for us, so thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, you've done a heck of a job. You really have. Can we give our chair a round of applause for? Thank you.
Thank you, Director Graves.
And, and you know, it's usually the people that are the closest that you miss and Director Rakowsky, I, you had your hand up for a while.
My only comment is, once again, Director Graves has beat me to the punch.
All right, seeing nothing on this business, Director Holan had asked for a period of comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is my last Dr. Cog meeting as a formal representative of the county. Uh, I've enjoyed the last four years here. Uh, it's been a very enlightening and very helpful opportunity to share our Arapaho County concerns and to share a, a, a vision of what the future of the Denver metro area looks like. It's been an honor. I'm going to be replaced, but I will continue to be an alternate by Jeff Baker. Jeff, could you stand? I'll make sure he's fully briefed. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be part of this great organization. Thank you.
One last opportunity for comment and at 5:29, we are adjourned.
If you would, please take your name tents out with you. Thank you.
Thank you.